Have enough here, we can get going. I will open up the March 16th, 2021 meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's just now seven o'clock. We will do a quick real call of who's here. Just when I say your name, just say hi, you're present. Rick Mitchell.
Mitchell, President.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, President.
Marnie Crutch. Richard Boroff.
President.
Great, and Brian Stein, the Chair, and as always, our Planning Director, Patrick Griffith.
Hello.
So on our agenda tonight, we have again, a review and discussion of potential bylaw changes to our, for our flexible residential zoning bylaw that we've been talking about for a number of months. We'll be talking about a possible zoning map change around the Winthrop School area downtown and other board business annual report in minutes later on. So I was not at the last meeting. I have not had a real chance to catch up either. So could somebody give me the quick minute rundown of what happened last time before we kind of jump into our first item here? Was it, was Alan Berry on the call last time?
Yes, Alan Berry was here, gave us actually probably a good hours worth of commenting on the flexible bylaw. Had a lot of comments that were in common with some of the others that we'd heard previously, but he had a lot of new ones as well.
Great. He also suggested that there was a mathematical error in the matrix, which is true, which I sent, sent around to Patrick, which I think sent around to everybody.
He was probably the most thoroughly burst in the bylaw. He clearly had read it in detail and his comments were very thoughtful.
Yep. Excellent.
And he in fact said, once we had made corrections or finished the final draft, he'd be happy to review it again. See if there were any other outstanding issues.
Great. Excellent. So I did see the issues to consider. Document Patrick that you sent around as well. So given, again, I'm slightly behind, given a little, given the update and everything, where, where are we in terms of, you know, edits and everything with the bylaw at this point?
We, we have quite a bit more editing yet to do. Marnie has gotten a deep dive into a lot of substance of the text. There are a lot of really good questions I think she's brought up that are questions for the board that I think the board needs to get their teeth into and, you know, address one way or another. And before we move on, I've sent those comments out if you have those.
Yep.
What I did is I took quite copious notes when the developers came before the board. And also the minutes did contain bullet points of some of the comments that were made. But what I tried to do is integrate the comments to specific provisions of the draft of the flexible zoning bylaw. So I tried to pose the questions in the context of specific provisions. I didn't attempt to answer the questions except maybe if it was real obvious or something, but I, I thought instead of just talking about what the developer said, we should talk about it in the context of the actual subsection of the zoning bylaw.
Right. Okay. So do you want to walk?
If, if, if I recall, he, he felt quite strongly that the law should not apply to, or that the, that the flexible zoning bylaw should not apply to develop existing developed neighborhoods. Is that the sort of correct way?
I think Alan.
So that, so that he didn't think you wanted to have people shoehorning houses in between established neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhoods. So he was, he's thinking it's really, it's more appropriate for larger pieces of land or, or, you know, more open space. Not, not as, not as, with the way he, the expression he used was not established neighborhoods.
We, and I think that makes sense.
Well, right now, in the draft that we circulated back in January, we had a minimum lot size, I believe of 80,000 square feet. And some of the developers thought that instead of having one standard size, it could be prorated depending upon the zoning district. So in the RA district, you might require a larger lot size than in the R1A district. So in the issues that I posed, I asked those questions in the context of the existing provisions.
Oh, shall we go through the questions?
That probably is the most logical way to approach it. And, and I think if we do that, it, it gives us a better outline, a better, a better way of making changes than just to have a kind of a free flowing discussion.
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise we're going to go in circles.
Right.
We'll go in circles. So the, the, the first questions I had were just renumbering the first two provisions. So that, that's just stylistic.
So Marnie.
Yep.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Is, is it possible for you or somebody to put the document that you prepared on screen?
If you had asked me that question an hour ago, I could I might have been able to do that, to do it now. To be honest, I don't have a clue how I would do that.
I can, I can share, for Patrick, I can share my screen. I have it, I have it up.
It's a word, it's a word document. If you can, if you can pull it up, that'd be great.
I did activate the multiple participants can share simultaneously command. So have at it, Bill.
Okay. Let me go here.
We can.
Do people see?
There we go.
There it is.
There we go.
Okay.
So I guess the first one, the third one.
So I posed renumbering eligible location, locations, but so I think the planning board rules and regulations, to me, that section is where we should define terms. Because we don't want to define the terms in the bylaw per se, because then if you change the standard or change a definition, you would have to go to town meeting to change the bylaw. But if you have the definitions in the, in the planning board rules and regulations, you have flexibility. And for example, we're, we're trying to come up with some type of energy saving solution so you can get a density bonus. So we should define what that is in the rules and regulations and not try and do it in the context of the matrix. And similarly, the compact units, the smaller units, there was a lot of discussion among the developers about what is the appropriate size? Is 1,500 square feet too small? Is 1,800 square feet the right size? And how do you measure that? Is that gross living area? Is it total area? Is it heated area? So by defining it in the rules and by those terms, and also any fees in the rules and regulations, they can be changed over time. So in the next 10 or 15 years, as technologies improve, then we can change the energy efficiency standards and, and things like that. So.
Okay, so, so that's really a housekeeping amendment, though, an important one to give us the flexibility to make modifications in terms of the definitions.
Exactly, but that doesn't obviate the fact that we actually have to define those.
Got it.
As Patrick said, just saying 10% efficiency, energy efficiency over existing building codes is completely and utterly unworkable. So I think that's, that's one of the goals that we have to do is, is to define what we mean by energy efficiency. See, and in this regard, and I, I sent some information to Patrick, but with respect to Willow Street and Brian and Rick, you of course know all about Willow Street, but the Tregorith Companies and in their nominee, when they do the construction, they are doing their passive house technology. And that's apparently pretty common in Europe. But that would be one way of defining energy efficiency.
And, and I'm wondering, and maybe, and I don't want to go down this too far, because we've got a lot of things to go through. I'm going to ask, Brian, is there any benefit to considering on the energy efficiency standards? Like lead gold, lead platinum, does that get you anywhere in terms of defining, or has that become so? I don't know.
Isn't that more for commercial?
It, it is used more for commercial, but there is, you know, residential.
Yeah, there definitely are.
There is, it's just, it's becoming honestly less and less popular than it was, you know, a number of years ago. It's, it's, it's a costly thing to get certification. It's, it's, you see, you see more people actually doing, you know, enough to get certification, but not getting certified just due to the cost of it. So they're implementing the standard, but not. You know.
Okay.
How about, how about hers?
Yeah, well, that, that is one way to do it as well. You know, given our, our stretch code community here, you have to meet a certain standard with that. So that, that's one way to say, okay, you got to be 10% better than the stretch code standard. But that, that's one aspect of energy efficiency. It's not water usage necessarily or anything like that. So there, there's so many avenues to go down to, you know, improve efficiency in various things, water, energy, whatever it is. That's why we need to define it better, right? Is it?
Okay.
Everything.
To residential as well as commercial or just one or the other?
No, it can apply everywhere.
Yeah, I just wanted to fly that by. We'll figure that out when we, when we get to regulations. So Marnie, want, we want to continue?
Well, I think everyone agrees though, that the definitions should be apart from the bylaw itself.
Of certain things, yes.
Yeah.
And just a typo there. In the third question, last sentence, about eight words in determine in section, not fin section.
Right, right. Oh, this is, these are just the issues. I found that typo too. Let me just tell you, the Supreme Court of the United States has typos in their decisions. And when they find the typos, they just withdraw the decision and issue another one with the correction and they never like fess up.
Okay, okay. Your excuse.
I, I found my own typos to my, and it humiliates me when I find them.
Okay, just, okay, justice. Crouch.
Anyhow, so I did attempt to then rewrite the section 8.1.4 renumbered to refer to those defined terms and also the fee structure, because over time the fees that we have in the matrix now may be insufficient and we want, would want to raise them. Or alternatively, you know, the, the, the flexible development bylaw becomes unworkable because the fees are too high. So we define the fees outside of the context of the bylaws.
Right.
And you can have them in the matrix, but just with the footnote that they're subject to change.
Yep, okay. Can you scroll down a little bit, Bill?
So some of the, the next question is about the eligible locations and there was some discussion about why there was a ban on the accumulation of lots. And I, it, well, for example, parcels in existence as of May 1st, 2008 may not be assembled to create a larger parcel for flexible development. That's similar to what's in the senior housing bylaw. But frankly, I don't know why it's there and I don't know what it adds. So anybody knows.
Wait a minute, which section, where, where?
Yeah, you need to scroll down, I think, because we're not there.
Page two.
Okay, I'm back at the first page.
Page two, we're on page two now. The first question on page two.
Yeah, I'm trying to think whether my partial. Are we on page two? I may have a document that's old.
Eligible locations.
This is, yeah, this is.
Bottom of it.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, there we go.
Right, so I don't know if anyone knows why that provision was in the senior housing bylaw and so I propose just taking it out unless someone can explain it and/or has some, you know, reason to include it.
Yeah, we talked about that after one of the other meetings recently that we could.
Well, let's, and this gets to, and we'll probably discuss this when we get to the matrix. It was just, it was put in there to basically say these projects and this relates to the senior housing, since this was old from that. Must be on two acres or more. So that, that was just setting a minimum lot size that you couldn't, you know, do it on and put up over 55 housing project on something less than two.
And I think that the purpose of this was to try and prevent people from assembling smaller house parcels to meet that 800, to meet that 80,000, then cut down the houses and build a senior housing project.
Actually, that is part of the senior housing bylaw too. There was a assemblage prohibition.
Right.
So this was just, just remember the history of the senior housing bylaw. It went through three different town meetings or got, you know, two different town meetings. So it was like a Christmas tree. Things got kept being added and added and added to try and ensure the public that, you know, this was, these projects were not going to overrun the town in on an unanticipated ways. But, so anyway, that's, that's just a little history.
How long ago was that? Senior housing, but Tom Ford seemed to suggest that removing that allowing the assemblage, but raising the minimum so as not to allow just a simple two pack.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, but, but the other thing is, you know, Barry was saying, if you, if you allow a sem- assemblage, then you're allowing the, you know, deterioration, changing of established neighborhoods. I actually thought those two developers were probably on opposite sides of the fence about this.
Well, then, then the question really becomes, if you eliminate the assemblage language, the next question I have is the limitations on the flexible development. And this is, again, this is stylistic by adding a new paragraph, but the, the fundamental question is do we have a minimum of 80,000 square feet? I think it, it might have been Tom Ford who recommended that the minimum square footage should be two or three times what the existing square foot requirement is. Or should we prorate them depending on the, the zoning district? So it's really three alternatives. A, a uniform standard, a sliding scale, or just double or triple what we already have. That's the discussion point.
Well, and I don't have an answer to that. This is, this is going to be critical issue that's going to take a lot of thought and careful consideration. I'm just trying to think about the impact of the selection we make of each of those three options. I'm just thinking of the, the Willow Street project, for example. Maybe that's not a good example. You know, that's a large development on one acre of land in the business district. So clearly you don't want that type of project going on in the R1A district, I think, but I could, you know, be convinced otherwise. But I think we've got, the whole point of this is flexibility. So in the downtown where the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, if I remember correctly, R1A.
That's true.
If somebody, I don't know how they would do it, but if they assembled two lots, they had an acre, would there be a problem if they, you know, put four units on it? Because in the R1A, many houses are on a 10,000 square foot lot. So.
Yeah, or less.
Or less. So I'm not sure, you know, by saying, well, if we, it has to be three times that. I just, we need to sort of think about if we choose each one, what is the impact? And I haven't.
I sort of like the idea of having it be a multiple of the current zoning, which is what the suggestion was.
Why would it be a multiple? Why not have it just be a percent, an added percentage? 25%, 50% or something like that.
Well, that's the same thing. I mean.
It's the same thing.
That's if, if it's, if it's two times, then, then it would be.
A hundred percent.
You, you would have to, yeah, you'd have to assemble an acre or you'd have to assemble two acres or you'd have to assemble.
But you could also, you could also assemble smaller amounts is what I'm getting at.
Well, it's, it's not that each parcel has to be that size. So when you're, when you're done assembling them, you're left with.
Well, let's use, let's use the R1A district just for, for fun to play with this and see how it, how it plays out. So let's, let's take the R1A that's 10,000 square feet and we say.
20.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sorry. There may be houses on 10, but if you want to build something, it's 20.
No, 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 I get it. I'm sorry. You, just when I fall off the rails, somebody please put me back on again. 20,000 square feet. So let's say we, we said it's got, you've got to make that for purposes of this discussion, and I'm not advocating this number. I'm just saying, must be at least double the underlying zoning before you use this. So it would go to one acre. That would seem reasonable there. If you wanted to put like four units on that acre. So what was the, the other one was a multiple, the, and Marnie, keep guiding us through this. The three options were a multiple.
A multiple, well, just one standard, 80,000 square feet. Or we could have different, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a multiple, but we could just set with.
Got it, got it. You could just say, you could just say, rather than a multiple, you could say in the RA, it must be a minimum of 40,000 square feet.
Right, right.
Or whatever that number is.
Whatever that number is.
So you're kind of.
It might be, it might be two or three times, but it could be two times in the RA and three ti- I mean, two times in the R1A and three times in the RA.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be a straight multiple, but it would just vary depending on the district.
Right, so those really actually combine. When you say it could be a multiple or it could be, what was the second one? Like the multiple, what was the other option? Marnie?
The standard, or you could say it had to be 40,000 in the.
Right, okay, that's what I, that's what I was trying.
80, you could say.
Right.
Some other amount, 100,000 in the R1B and you could say 200,000. And it, it might not be the same multiplier.
Oh, those really are the.
They're similar, they're similar.
They're very similar. You're, you're setting a minimum land size requirement.
Exactly.
So the question is, what's the appropriate minimum land size requirement in each zone?
And it was 80,000 in the senior housing bylaw, just as a benchmark.
Yeah, that was the one we just read that we're actually going to take out because we're potentially adopting this one.
Okay, now. What zone is the downtown area where?
Me.
I live, Rick.
R1A.
The R1A, isn't it?
Oh, 1A, okay, sorry.
Pardon? We're in the R1A.
1A.
Okay, so in these, there's not much land or any land that's developable, is there?
Not a whole lot.
Not a whole lot.
Well, no, at the 80,000 square foot level, you would have to
assemble.
Assemble a lot of lots downtown. Well, 80,000 square feet, you'd have to assemble a dozen houses.
On my street, it'd be four lots. Are the lots on my street are basically 10,000 feet apiece?
Right, so you'd have to assemble eight of, eight of them.
Yeah.
But you know, we, I think in the neighborhood, I think you live on Moynihan, is that right, Richard? You wouldn't necessarily want to see, you know, a, a larger multi-unit development. That's a, that's an established, single family home neighborhood. And, and, and this is what some of the developers were talking about. You know, you wouldn't want to see something that's out of scale.
The actual point is there is no open space in this area.
Right.
My, my street is completely developed.
Right.
So it's, it's sort of moot. You'd have to tear down houses to build new houses.
Right.
Well, that might be profitable, although that goes to the heart of the issue that this would allow, you know, significant changes in established neighborhoods. If you want to prevent that, I think you should do it through the land assembly. You say, not only do you need 20, 40 or 80,000 square feet, but you can't assemble smaller lots to get that.
Yeah.
Because then you're, then you're talking about basically teardowns.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm wondering if you're, I, I would look at it slightly differently. I'm wondering if you set minimums at two or three times the underlying zoning. Then you could allow assemblage. Now, in the R1A, it's going to be extremely difficult, if not impossible. If you set it at three times, because that would be 60,000 square feet or an acre and a half. So unlikely to happen, but somebody could make it happen. So I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud as we, as we play this.
Well, I think it would be cost prohibitive because
Right.
in order to get to 40,000 square feet, you'd have to buy four lots on my street. And each of the lots is vet, with the house that's on them currently are probably in the neighborhood of $500,000 apiece.
Oh, anyway.
Pardon?
Anyway, right now, I mean.
Yeah.
So.
Right, you're right. I mean, you're buying four houses at 600 or 700,000 dollars apiece right now. And so you're paying, you know, two and a half million dollars for.
That's not going to, so, so this really in practical terms. That's not gonna, so, so this really, uh, i- in practical terms. It's moot. Isn't, it, it, um, if we say, you know, two times or three times, it's just practically not going to apply. Economically, it will just not, it's a non-starter.
That's right.
Right, I mean, it, it'd be one thing if we were allowing. You know, twenty units an acre, but that's not what we're, that's not what's happening here.
No, that's what the other new zoning bylaw will do in the business district. That the state has enacted that requires a minimum of fifteen units.
Right.
Per acre within a half mile of the MBTA station. So, that's, that's gonna be in the business district.
It may well be limited, though, by the septic considerations.
Oh, it al- it always will be.
Yep.
Yeah, just won't be feasible.
So, let's, let's try R one B, so that's a forty thousand square foot. Minimum requirement under existing zoning. So if, and it's more, there are more opportunities to do assemblage there. So if we say a minimum of, let's go to, just for the purposes of discussion, I'm not advocating one way or the other. That it has to be double, eighty thousand square feet, which is what the bylaw from the senior housing bylaw said. That you couldn't do anything less than eighty thousand square feet.
Then you'd have to buy up two adjoining.
Lots.
Lot, single-family houses, presumably, yeah. Unless it was vacant land, unless there was vacant land around.
Right, or they have an existing two-acre lot.
That's right.
Yeah, are there any existing two-acre lots in the, in the?
Oh, yeah, oh, there are.
Okay.
Um, so. So that's, that, so really, R one B and RA are the two areas that are most likely to be influenced by this bylaw. I mean, a- and, and I think all of the developers, certainly Larry Smith, that on our last conversation, that he thought. I asked this question and it's reflected in the minutes, he said, really, the RA district is where this is most likely to be. Applicable because of, it's, you know, the ability to large lots, set aside of open space. And still being able to build some level of density to compensate for the acquisition cost.
Imagine, there's plenty of lots that are much larger than the eighty thousand requirement that could split off. Maintain a sizable property and, you know, create a project neighbor.
Yeah, if, if you had a, say, somebody with a four-acre parcel with a house on it, he could subdivide the house, right? And split off a, keep the house on two acres and take the other two acres and meet the eighty thousand. And build a, you know, more dense complex. I'm sure his neighbors wouldn't like it, but.
Well. Not necessarily, so if we're gonna say that we're doubling or tripling other zones, we'd be, we'd be doing the same thing for RA, so you need one sixty.
That gets more and more difficult unless you have a, some house that really has a, a lot of land around it. In which case, maybe this is appropriate, and then you want it.
Right.
So I would, I would be in favor of it, again, in the, in the RA, expanding it. From either eighty to a hundred and sixty, or whatever you want.
But, right, but do, do we wanna do that, right? I mean, since, we didn't do that for senior housing.
Right, so. So, I'm, I'm one, wondering if then we go back and say. Uh, and it's, and it's kind of funny, though, that the senior housing bylaw may actually be applicable here. It's lot size must be at least eighty thousand square feet.
So, yeah, cuz, I mean, if you start requiring people to assemble larger lots. You're almost enforcing larger developments, because after we set aside the development parcel. We focus only on the number of acres within the parcel to derive units within that parcel, so. RA, by requiring them to set aside more, you're also, in a sense, requiring them to build a larger development.
Right.
Whereas in RA, few acres, fewer units, and.
Right.
But maybe that's what we want to do, what we're trying to do is get development away from. Traditional development, and by definition, that applies to developments, as opposed to people. Trying to build an extra house or two.
Well, what I think, uh, I understand Corey correctly, I think what you're saying is, if you. Require a larger minimum, the acquisition cost to get, assemble those properties. Or is gonna demand a higher level of density, is that what you were trying to say?
Well, that and by assembling more acreage, my allowance to build more based on the matrix that we have. Goes up, so you never have a smaller development, you won't as often see a four-unit development, because.
No, well, yeah, the economics wouldn't, wouldn't uh let you do that, and.
Well, yeah, you, you, you're gonna see that anyway, right? I mean, yeah, there might be the, the couple little, you know. Two, well, four-acre developments, depending on what we do, if we say it's eight, well, if we say it's eight thousand, yeah, you might have a couple little two-acre developments here and there, but. People, you know, developers are gonna want a larger parcel anyway. Yeah, to spread the cost around, or everything, so.
I, I, I mean, I think what we're, and just out of curiosity, is, um, Larry Smith's Meadow Brook is in the R one B, isn't it?
Yes.
Patrick?
Let me check for sure.
Pretty sure.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it is too, I, I'm, I mean, there you've got sixty acres, now that clearly is an outlier. Um, that may be only sixty-acre parcel in the R one B, but there you have.
It is R one B.
Yeah. So. I'm wondering if we just stick with the minimum eighty thousand square feet.
Probably the way to look at it is that was an accepted adopted number previously. We have the ability as, uh, we discuss it at town meeting. And in the public hearings, uh, to basically say that. Uh, this is a number that has been successful in the, uh. Uh, senior housing bylaw, we're incorporating it within this one as well. Makes sense?
I, it, it kind of intuitively does to, to me, but I can be convinced otherwise.
Yeah, from, from that standpoint, it does.
Well, it, the impact of a fixed limit like that is to make it relatively easy. To implement developments in the RA district. And in the denser districts, uh, particularly R one A. It's gonna make it impossible.
Yeah, I know, cer- certain, yeah, and I think, but I think by default, you know, we were talking about if we used like two times the base. Three times the base in the R one A, it wasn't gonna happen anyway.
Okay.
Um, and, and it's, it's almost, and I'm not suggesting this, but just for the purposes of discussion. Could almost eliminate R, R one A from this bylaw. Now, that may politically not be desirable, because people say, why are you singling out R one B? And RA, you know, why not include R one, R one A? Um, but effectively, I think from our discussion here, we understand that. Whatever minimum, whether it's two, three times, or minimum of eighty thousand square feet, in the R one A. That's very, very unlikely to happen. I don't see any two-acre parcels sitting around in R one A.
No. But there, there's a few here and there, I mean, they're not undeveloped, but.
Right, but then that was the whole point of the discussion is, well, you could develop them, but you'd have to buy like four parcels. For two million dollars, tear them down and then put up. So.
The Dodge Tree site, that's probably.
An acre. Yeah. Yeah, and that's within the business district, so.
Yeah.
It's also going to be in the new Housing Choice Initiative District.
But it's also in the Willow Street Oberly District too, which allows.
So. So, um. Go ahead.
Maybe for the moment, we should just leave it like it is, eighty.
Yeah, for the, I, I think for the purposes of taking this public, why, just leave it there and then. You know, if the, if the public has better ideas, or we find there's a. Um, some other better way to do it. We'll change it.
And how about the accumulation or the assemblage of parcels? Should we leave that as well?
I think we should allow it.
Allow the assemblage of parcels?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have to.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with that, I can't.
If you, if you, if you don't allow it, then you're, then you're really blocking this thing completely.
I think those are, the, these are, um, I'm glad to see the, um, unanimity on this, because. Um, I think these are like two foundational, um, pieces of this bylaw. Uh, the other is the matrix.
Okay, I'm going to the next page.
Uh, wait a minute, what, what's the, uh?
Eight, one, five, going from a hundred to fifty units?
Uh, well, the, there was a question, someone said. That the development should be limited to vacant lots or lots with teardowns, so we're just going to say no to that.
Right.
And right, then the next question is whether, um, we should go from one hundred, uh, units to fifty. Uh, I think that was Tom Ford's, um, comment.
That was, that was total units, right?
Right.
Right, 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 right. Right.
Oh, just, right, I was doing the project, okay.
Probably for the per, for the purposes of, uh, acceptability by the general public, probably fifty. Um, but I'm wondering if we might wanna add a qualifier to this. That says, uh, you know, unless, um. Uh, and let's just say, for the purposes of discussion, again, I'm not advocating here. That Larry Smith gets a project like in the R one B, that where there's sixty acres. And, um, and he could actually put, and to say like sixty or seventy units on a sixty-acre property. And do it in a, in a tasteful, well, well, uh, shielded manner. Would, is that something that the planning board should have the flexibility to allow?
So I, I actually think that this hundred units was the maximum. Built under the flexible development, cuz we actually have a project maximum of fifty units. And I recall Peter Gordo suggesting that you could lower it to twenty-five, keep it financially sound for the developers, and be more accessible to the town within that. So I think a hundred is.
Oh, okay. That's a good point, is, is that, Barney, is that true?
Uh, I think, I think what he was suggesting is that there would be fifty units total under the flexible development bylaw.
Ah, okay.
Twenty-five per year.
Ah, oh, okay.
So that's reduced from the senior housing bylaw.
Yeah, there, there it is on the next page.
Well, 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 but where are we? Oh.
Oh, top of the next page, the, top, top of that page.
Oh.
So it was fifty in total and twenty-five per year.
Right.
Oh.
And the senior bylaw is a hundred in total.
Right, townwide.
Townwide.
Okay, and does the senior housing bylaw limit the project size?
Fifty, I believe, fifty.
That's, that's what that is.
Okay, so why don't we just leave it the way it is?
I think Gordo's point was simply that you could keep it as sound for developers and make it more scalable to the town, at town meeting. He was just trying to sort of.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, I, I, I get that, but we're actually, this sort of gets back to the eighty thousand square feet and a couple of other things we're doing is. It already exists, and we're actually gonna adopt another component of that, the distance between projects. Um, it comes from the, uh, senior housing bylaw that no, no more than a hundred could be built down wide, and a maximum of fifty per project. It's already, um, codified and been accepted by the town. Uh, yeah, here's my, and here's my point, i- in the, um, in the process that we go through, we may end up. Uh, lowering that, but I'd rather start at a higher number that's already been accepted by the town and the voters. And we have examples of how it's played out, and say, hey, this is working, and we've seen it work, and it's been accepted. And if we have to at a later date, because there's, um, you know, particular, um. Uh, resistance to this, then we can, uh, lower that number.
I agree, I agree with that.
Are there examples now in existence?
Of the senior housing bylaw?
Uh, yeah.
Well, yeah, Canterbury.
Canterbury, okay.
Canterbury and Patton Ridge.
Right. Patton Ridge, so the bottom line is that, um, section eight point one point five. And section eight point one point ten are unchanged, they're the same as the senior housing bylaw.
Mm-hmm, I think that's what we're saying here, if that's.
Exactly, I'm just clarifying.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm, believe me.
So we, we haven't gotten to eight point one point ten, but I, just on the assumption that we reduced. The distance, uh, the, reduce the number, I deleted some of the provisions related to the.
Distance.
Distance, that was just on the assumption that it was reduced, but I think it's, again, I think to the extent that. This bylaw tracks the senior housing bylaw, I, I, it, that appeals to me, uh, it.
You mean, there's, so retain the existing distance, minimum distance.
Exactly.
Okay, that's fine with me, again, we're, we've got precedent. And I, I don't think it materially undermines this bylaw.
Do we have to, um, limit them from each other as well, or?
That's the distance between projects.
Yes, like, from any project like this, right, not just. Senior housing center across from a flexible development is no different than having two of each.
That's good, actually, that's a, that's a very good point, um, so we need to make sure that's clear. So that we don't get, um, uh, uh, and here's a good example. Uh, that may or may not occur, we've got Canterbury with, uh, twenty-three units, and, um. Peter Britton is proposing, uh, I believe it's forty-two affordable units, literally next door.
Forty-five.
That's a forty B, though.
No, no, I understand, I, I, I'm, I'm just using that as an example, it, we don't want that to happen by default. Uh, we under, I understand it's a forty B and they can do that, but we don't want by default.
Yeah.
Suddenly, you know, if that happens, that, that will materially change that neighborhood, you've got twenty-three.
Well, and also the ten possible units from, um.
Across the street.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, I, I, I think Corey's is a very good point, we wanna make sure that there's a provision that there, we're not getting clusters.
Well, so, we should just say. From any, well, from any flexible development project or senior housing development.
Yes. Yes.
I'll have to make sure that. Uh, the other thing about the forty-five units on Peter Britton's four acres, I, this is just information. Um, in the housing production plan, if the town meets its goal, I'm not sure what the percentage is. Of having affordable housing, um, that meets the, meets that percentage. Then we have more, um, discretion in the zoning, uh, well, in the, um. Number of units, and whatnot, so there'll be eighteen units going on the S H I when, um. The Degorth Company's nominee gets their building permit, so that, that gives the town some, uh. A little bit more control over a forty B than it otherwise would not have.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Because we haven't done. Very many units up until. You know, this over the last number of years, right? So.
But it's in any given year.
Yeah.
We haven't we haven't met that for the last number of years.
But we'll meet it this year.
Correct. No, I know, but.
So you'll get one year of. Thank you, safe harbor. Yes, and and in fact, when and if, and this is a big if at Gordon Theological Seminary. Actually. That sells off that project and turns it into a forty B, we will have then met our. Affordable housing requirement. And a project like Peter's and I'm not and I'm not naysaying Peter's project. He's doing it because he's got. No, he's really committed to this, so I'm not shooting it down. I'm just saying. If Gordon Theological Seminary were to. Do that project and it qualified as affordable and we met our minimum requirement. Then and Peter came along or somebody else came along and wanted to do forty-five units, we could just say. We would have them the legal authority to say, I believe, and Marty, if I'm wrong, to say no.
Well, if we if we actually met our our ten percent requirement.
Yes.
I isn't there an issue as to whether or not the student housing would qualify at the college?
Well, it wouldn't be a stu- oh, I see what you're saying. Well, there are some, they said some number of those they would reserve, but I think with with. Willow Street. And with the project that's going to go across the street from Canterbury. And. In theory, Gordon Theological, you might actually and the existing inventory we have might actually be.
Be close. We'll we'll be really close. We're losing, I think, six units because. They had a thirty-year deed restriction instead of a permanent one.
Anyway.
Where where were we on?
Spacing of projects, minimum size.
Yeah, we got that. And then now we're on to the open space. What's? Can we have subject systems on land defined as open space?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I think we should. I think we should get rid of it, too.
Which one is that? Oh, there. Okay, got it. I see.
Twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, no, right? I think we that one's quick.
Yep.
Next one, definition of developable acres. Instead of using developables, developable square feet. Probably makes sense. So it's all in the same language.
Yes, I agree. I think that's important. Several people mentioned that.
And unfortunately, the senior housing by law refers to developable acres.
Yeah. It's fine. Yeah, it's it's semantics in a way, but.
Semantics, I know it.
It just out of curiosity, is there? Kind of compelling reason to make it square feet as opposed to develop acres?
Well, because our zoning bylaws and square feet, twenty, forty, eighty.
I got it.
Those are actual acres or half acres, so.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Annoyingly close to half acres.
What's that?
I said they're annoyingly close to half acres.
Yeah.
Who came up with that?
He just wanted to round numbers, I guess.
Right, exactly.
Actually, I have, over time, I've been told that the numbers are. Less than forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty, which is the real numeric acre.
Right.
That they were, they chose what was known as the builder's acre. Which is that forty-three, five, sixty minus what typical. Gritted roadway and infrastructure area would require. So the forty K land area is what was known as a builder's acre. And that's how we got the forty K number.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, incentive. Eight, one, nine.
Yep. Number of compact units be reduced from fifty to twenty-five. Probably.
How small are the compact units?
We haven't decided that.
Well, there was a discussion about raising it. All the developers that we talked with, in my opinion, felt. You just didn't see how anybody was going to make. Take advantage of this. It was they were just, there was no market for it.
Larry was, I think Larry or. Larry, what's his name? What's his first name?
Alan.
Alan. Somebody said eighteen hundred square feet really would be the the minimum. So, yeah, twenty-five to twenty-five percent is fine.
My my house is eighteen hundred square feet. How can you consider that to be minimum? It's a colonial garrison and it's a standard building style in this area.
Well, that's what they're saying is that.
Quite get that.
People don't really, if they're buying a new home, they don't build nor want a smaller home than that.
I felt like though that, I mean, they were talking very right now, right? We've all been cooped up for a year. We all think that.
Well.
Our thousand, two thousand square foot apartments in the city are too small. We need to go buy a five thousand square foot home. Years from now, that may not be true. I mean. My house is sub what we were considering compact before we raise it and now we're raising it and requiring fewer of them. Doesn't seem like that wants to be a category anymore at that point.
I mean, I I think it's definitely, this is one of the, you know. Developer. Things, right? I mean, Larry was saying that the hardest units to sell right now are his smallest units. Now granted, they're middle. Units, but. You know, maybe, maybe, I mean, there's definitely something to that.
Well, this is funny because, you know, if you if you remember back, we talked about. And I know. Bill will remember this is the cottage housing. Project, but there are cottage housing project and a very nice one in Lex, not Lexington, Concord. And I believe those are twelve hundred square feet. And they sold, you know, and I think they were going for six or seven hundred thousand, but it was built as a village and done very nicely. So it's interesting and maybe that concept never caught on. I don't know. I haven't been following it. But I that's where this whole conversation started. Going back, oh, Brian, you and Richard may remember this probably five, six years ago.
Yep.
Members of the planning board were really high on cottage housing as the way to go. So this is sort of the. The remnants of that discussion. And it may and it may just not be. Timely in the world of building today.
Well, yeah, and part of it is, remember the developers that we're talking to as well. They just don't do that. Right?
Right, just don't what?
They just don't build small houses.
Yeah. So I think that I think that I I think this is an interesting conversation is you're right, because. We had developers come in who were building cottage housing and that's how this thing got started. So. I I think we just, we can certainly reduce it to twenty-five percent. Then we can figure out how we come work in the regulations, what that number is. Is it fifteen? Is it sixteen? Is it eighteen?
To Nick's point, you may remember probably four and a half, five years ago. We had a fellow named Rob Brennan. And he was big into worker housing and he was looking at the. The rich property, Cutler Ridge property at the end of Maple Street. For quite some time and he actually came to the board. And was discussing worker housing, which was. I think it was like a thousand to thirteen hundred square feet per unit. And, you know, he had done pretty well on that in other projects else. Elsewhere, didn't get off the off first base with the sellers of the property, but. I. I know, having looked at. You know, a lot of Architectural Digest kinds of magazines over the last few years, that small homes. Have been a pretty big, you know, topic. In a a really strong narrative in America about how to create more housing. For those that need it and particularly singles, small families as well.
Am I correct that that development in Concord is along the river?
It is.
Yes.
So I think that those those and I think because I remember that development of the Cutler Ridge. Property because of the Butts Woodland Mead where I live. There there was another development down on the Cape and I would imagine that 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 was almost for second homes for people. But that the that Cutler Ridge property, aside from being rather wet in parts. You know, it was a development in 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 on a mosquito farm. I mean, I just, it never made that much sense to me. It 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 just had, there was no surrounding it, you know, no vista, no nothing. I mean, it just was squished in. It was just kind of squished in and I and I. I I would question its marketability in the last analysis. So it wasn't really walking distance to town. And if you could walk to a commercial. Center, that would have appeal, but just down the middle of nowhere, it seems a little.
Oh, the interesting and.
You need something to kind of make it tie tie it together in a way. It almost has to be on a, you know, some feature in the landscape to make it compelling.
Well, we won't solve this discussion, nor should we tonight on what the actual size is, because we'll do that in the regulations. But I'll I just suggest to all the board members is take a drive down Cutler. Road. Probably about a mile in from Bay Road. There are three and they must have been worker housing. For some estates, probably fifty, sixty years ago, that fell into disrepair and were abandoned. Somebody bought them and is now rebuilding them. The first ones rebuilt, ones being torn down, but it's going to be rebuilt on the foundation. First one that's. Has been. Rebuilt and is in the process is, I I'm guessing maybe nine hundred square feet, maybe a thousand.
Where? Where are these again, Rick?
Cutler Road, about a mile in on the right from, and there are three parcels there and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, one is like a third of an acre, one's a half and one is a one acre. Most of them go back, that most of that land goes back in the wetlands, so it's not developable.
Yeah, they're all undersized.
They're very undersized, but I went into, I was snooping around and the builder was in there. And he invited me to look in and there are two small bedrooms, one and a half baths, a small kitchen, a little living room with a fireplace. And for somebody, a single person or maybe, you know, a new young couple or elderly retired person. It would be fine. And they're going to be right there within fifty feet of each other. And it's going to be interesting to see how they are rebuilt. So I'm just saying for the purposes of this discussion. Time, just drive down that road, take a look at them and see what you think.
Is that the RA district?
I think that's R one B.
And those lots are an acre apiece because my guess is they're using the existing footprint because they'd be grandfathered in.
Yep, and they are.
Right, they're under an acre, some of them.
Yeah.
So they couldn't do anything else. I mean, whoever bought it had to.
That's not true.
They could combine the.
No, you could you could have expanded the houses.
Yeah. They were all originally built before zoning came to Hamilton. So they would be considered legal non-conforming lots.
Yeah, and you can expand those.
Yeah. So it just I just brought that up as an example, just to take a look and and just for comparison purposes. And see what you think. You know, they are going to be small, relatively small. First one's one story, the second one might be two stories, I don't know, could be twelve or fifteen hundred square feet, but I thought. It's an interesting something to watch and look at and get and get a visual reference point. Anyway, let's move on.
Yeah, let's yeah, let's move on. Do we skip? Do we go to the efficient units? I mean, we have to, we have to figure that out. We're not going to do it tonight. So how about eight, one, nine?
We're changing to square feet again.
Right. And then. Number one there. About the payment. There any adjustment to those?
No, I don't see. No, I think that's fine. Those changes.
Okay, next. Covered that.
Cover that. We're not going to decide on the.
Right, okay. The matrix include additional examples.
Matrix has all been redone. The calculations, this calculation in particular over here was wrong. So I sent it out to. I sent it to Patrick. Patrick sent it around. Revision. Marty, did you get it? You you got Patrick's?
I don't remember getting it.
It had a date on it of January fifth was, but but you actually just redid it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I changed the date. Hold on a second. You guys can still see my document, right?
Yeah, that's the one you put up. That's the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the one that's included in my document.
Yeah, that's an old one, I think.
Yeah, the one that had, the one that Patrick sent around. Oh, yeah, it says, it still says up at the top, one, five, twenty, twenty-one. Yep.
But that's the one that should now be inserted in the.
That's that's correct.
Okay, I'll do I'll do that. I'll insert it into the actual draft of the bylaw.
Okay.
I know I printed it out and now I can't find it, although it's in front of me somewhere.
All right, we have to change the, whoops. The footnotes. Dealing with building efficiency, plumbing, compact units, all that's subject to deciding on those. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, she got the wording right. We just have to insert the matrix.
The correct numbers in the matrix.
The correct number numbers.
Yep.
And then there's changes relating to square feet as opposed to acres.
Right. We've already covered the minimum distance between projects, although we, you know, we need to modify that. Like we talked about earlier. Okay, that's that's easy. What's next?
Yeah, and actually, it's, back, can you back up? I'm just reading the minimum distance. It says.
Can we go back to the matrix for a minute? Okay, because there's there's a, there's an inconsistency here, I think. If we go to page four. In paragraph one of eight point one point nine, it says minimum payments. A hundred and fifty thousand for the R one A, a hundred for the R one B and fifty for the RA. But in column G of the matrix, it's fifty for the R1A and R1B, and twenty-five for the RA. So which is correct?
What's in the matrix?
Go back to the matrix, Bill.
What's in the matrix is correct.
So that that means paragraph one in the incentives has to be changed.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Continue on, Bill.
Okay.
What was that, Rick? You want to admit something about the minimum distance?
Um, no, yeah, it does, actually, if you go down about four lines, it said any minimum distance must be a third of a mile from any other existing or approved flexible development, should say, any other senior housing or flexible development project.
Well, it already says, any existing or approved project, including multi-unit residential buildings.
Okay, I just, that's clear.
So that, that would cover it for, you know, a forty B project or something like that, so.
Okay, okay.
So that stays the same, all the, you know, crossouts that I have, they're obsolete. Going to, the only thing, no, it's fine. The only thing that's changed is deleting the parcels in existence on May fifth, two thousand and eight. That, that comes out, but the rest of, the rest is the same as in the senior housing bylaw.
Next, Bill.
You talking about this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's gone, that's good.
That all stays the same. So the next question is about the inclusionary housing bylaw.
Yeah, and that was the one, I think Larry Smith.
Yeah, that was Larry Smith.
Larry Smith said it, I think it was him.
It was him.
It was.
That it was really a deal killer.
Yeah, with, with that and the payments that they have to make? Yeah.
Yes. If you want the developers, I mean, you know, they're already making a significant payment. If you want them, in addition, to set aside, I don't know, twenty percent of the units, they're going to lose that profit too. I I would say let's keep this a bylaw about flexibility, not-
Well, why don't you-
Three or four goals at the same time.
Why don't you read my fix? Because I think the fix is really flexible. We can waive compliance with the inclusionary bylaw. Or, you know, there may be an opportunity to get some money for affordable housing. So that the way I, I worded it, is that in the discretion of the planning board, these provisions, it may be waived or modified. So if a developer could show that it's a deal breaker, like Larry Smith said, you don't have to comply with the inclusionary zoning bylaw. But, for example-
Well, you know what's going to happen, in, in practical terms, every developer is going to come and say, I can't do this, I need to waive this.
Yeah, I agree. It's, if, if, if they're not going to use it,
I always had the notion that we were going to be able to have the developer even, either set aside open space or do affordable housing. One of the two, certainly not both.
Yeah, nothing, Larry Smith is the only person that we talked to that mentioned it, and he's the least likely to ever try to build using this bylaw.
I think, but I, I believe Larry, because he really did his homework. He, the other thing is, we could leave this in, and when and if anything happens at Gordon Theological Seminary, that gets us over the hurdle of having a minimum to meet our ten percent, therefore, we can be much more exclusionary. I don't, that's not-
Well, but, but if we keep building, and we're not offsetting it with affordable units, then you, then you're not-
True, true. Well, if you leave it in with a senior housing, which seems to be-
Yep.
And, and true, and, you know, maybe ten or fifteen years or, or longer, senior housing will be out of fashion, because there aren't any seniors like us now. So-
Everybody's going to get old.
Well, well, we shouldn't just assume that, you know, because Larry Smith is the only one who picked up on this. None of the other developers really picked up on it. I, I didn't quite follow what Alan Berry was saying with respect to rental housing versus regular houses that are sold, so I didn't quite follow what he said. But, you know, we shouldn't assume that all the developers are going to come in with a persuasive argument why they can't pay something. You know, they say they can't pay.
Well, there's no flexibility, there's no flexibility on the payment. That's all, that's all written very clearly. I think there, you know, you can make it so difficult that they don't want to, they don't want to take advantage of the, of the bylaw. I think, I mean, I think Marty's right that there's an out here, that we can require it, but we can waive it. Either, I mean, and I also agree with Rick, we're either going to always waive it, because nobody's going to take advantage of it. We're either going to always waive it, or we might as well just give it to that section.
Well, I think for, we could certainly leave it in, and with the understanding that almost every, if not all, developers are going to say, I want to waive this. And then maybe we just say, well, for the purposes of this bylaw, well, we're just going to let that happen. Assuming, for the time being, that the senior housing bylaw, Larry's building, you know, if it gets approved by the planning board, you know, that a million dollar contribution to the senior housing, that's affordable housing. So that maybe that's the engine that drives.
So, so are you going to, are you going to say in writing that it can be waived?
Because- No, that's what we're saying, leave it in, that-
Then there's no out. Then you have a very set of stiff payments the developer has to make to the open space fund. And at the same time, he either has to provide the inclusionary housing, or make, you know, a million dollar payment, or whatever it is going to be, to the Affordable Housing Trust. I think, I mean, I think you can drive developers away.
So what are you, what are you recommending, Bill?
I would recommend that we think about this bylaw as being an alternative. Rather than making a payment to the Affordable Housing Trust, which is what you're doing with senior housing bylaw, here you're making a payment to the Open Space Fund.
So what do you, so are you recommending leaving eight point one point one two in or out?
Out.
Out. No, I think, I mean, I, I agree with that. I, you know, each, each different bylaw can require different things. And in this case, where we were putting more emphasis on open space than on affordable housing.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm fine with-
To ask a lot for both?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think you can ask for both.
And the purpose of this bylaw was sort of the flexibility in open space, not inclusionary. We already have, you know, two bylaws that deal with that.
I'm fine with taking it out.
I, I think that's what I would do.
Shall we take a straw poll?
I'd take it out.
Marty?
Well, as the chair, chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm really not in a position to say delete it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Abstain.
Yeah, you, you-
I like my language, that's why I put it in there, modified, waived, whatever. So I, I can't, I'm not going to go with the majority on this one. But I, I very much understand the point, and, and I, and I don't disagree that the, that the two, that the bylaws address different issues, so.
Corey? I'm trying to read through exactly what eight, one, twelve is, and it seems to me it's only asking that we follow suit with, you know, a, a minimum inclusion when we build. So if we're building a hundred units, and all we're asking is that a standard amount of inclusionary houses be included in that, I don't see a reason to take it out.
Well, actually, what, what happens, Corey, is they, well, for example, with Canterbury and this proposed Meadowbrook, they don't include the affordable housing within the development. There's a formula that's used to calculate a payment. And so that's, that's how the Affordable Housing Trust has received a significant amount of money. Almost half a million from Canterbury and, and a proposed payment of a million dollars from this Meadowbrook, so it would be-
Eventually, that money has to get spent, though, right? Like, eventually, a unit must get built. Something needs to be-
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's up to the developer whether they'd rather pay the money and see the unit built somewhere else, as opposed to putting it in the, in the midst of their development.
Except on senior housing, they really can't.
Right.
Affordable unit over fifty-five.
So you have to make a payment for senior housing, because affordable housing, I think generally has to be open for families.
Right.
Right. So it sounds like we sort of have four to three to take it out, or four to, or five, no. One abstaining, or one person can't support this for obvious reasons. Sounds like the majority is comfortable taking it out?
Well, let me just throw out one other thought here. If, if there are smaller units in a development, when I say modified, you, you, instead of the calculation of how many affordable units would, would be in the development, you might say, well, we'll just take one for affordable housing, instead of maybe five or three. You see what I mean? With the language that I have, it, you know, if we waive it every time, that's fine, but
How about, can I make another?
It might be useful, I don't know.
Can I make another suggestion?
Sure.
Just since we're playing with this. If the developer selects the compact housing incentive and builds compact housing on site, we waive this provision for affordable?
I don't think that accomplishes the affordable goal. I think what the developer will do, if they find it, there's a market for, you know, let's say, houses for single people, so he can build, you know, nice but very small houses for single people, or couples, or whatever. That's what he'll do. And it won't accomplish the affordability goal at all. There, there's, they're two, they're two different things. They're not exactly alike. Affordable and small.
Well, maybe the same could be said for senior housing. Oh, well, no, there's a problem there with the family business. I respect the, your position, Bill. I mean, I understand it fully. I just am a bit compromised.
Well, I can easily understand why you have to abstain from this.
So, so I think the consensus is, take it out.
Yeah, I think at least for now.
Slim consensus, slim consensus.
Right, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep our minds open, and but for now, I, I, I agree with Bill, and I think the way that most people are going to look at this is, the way it's written is, we want an exemption.
Right. Okay.
All right, that goes, next page.
In the senior housing bylaw, there was a table with dimensional standards. And in our discussions, we took that out. But I think some of the developers noticed that, that we didn't have any standards, and I think Alan Berry was talking about buffer areas for developments if they're, you know, off a recognized street. So I don't know whether or not we want to go ahead and add some design, dimensional standards back in, like lots of yard widths and stuff like that, or not.
I mean, we, we took it out at one point to be more flexible, I think, and to allow, you know, if somebody came to us at a pre-app and a quick, a plan that they had, and we saw a glaring issue that we could, you know, say-
They do have site plan review.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, somebody might come and want to do a, you know, an attached string of four or five houses, and somehow it didn't meet dimensional, and yet when you sat back and looked at it, you say, oh, that's a clever idea. I, I sort of, the dimensional things really bind you a lot. They really restrict you a lot.
Thinking about this issue and driving down, I guess, Asbury Street, looking at Canterbury on one side, and Baton Ridge on the other side, I wouldn't mind a little bit of dimensional standards pushing those large homes so close together and so close to the road. It seems crazy out of place on the right-hand side, and rather set into the setting well on the left-hand side.
I mean, they actually have the same set of dimensional standards in that case, right? I mean, they had the same distance between houses. But you're right, one is just closer to the road, because it, you know.
Yeah, I don't think, Corey, I don't think the general dimensional standards deal with sort of how far back from the road the whole development is set. It's, it's a very good point, but I, I don't-
You know, I think from a visual perspective, that, that the problem arises when you, when you're driving down a street, and you have, on one side of the road, houses facing the street, and then you have a development where the back of the houses face the street, and that's sort of unappealing in a way. And they have, they have landscaped Canterbury to ameliorate that, but I think that was what Alan Berry was getting at, that, that, you know, should there be some kind of setback from the road far enough so that you don't get that kind of visual anomaly where you have, you're driving along a road, and not that, you know, far back from the road is the back of a series of houses instead of-
But again, isn't, isn't that the kind of stuff we're supposed to do with site plan review? Which is not regulatory, it's more like, you know, guidance and design guidance and-
No, and I, and I understand that. I just, I just was, to Corey's point, I think that, that's one of the issues that, that would come up with kind of a clustered housing, how, how it orients to the, to the street. But it's, you're right, it's part of site plan reviews.
I'd, I'd, I'd strike it.
Well, we wouldn't add it. That, the question was whether we should add what's in the senior housing bylaw into this bylaw, and the consensus is no, it's unnecessary.
Okay. Parking.
This was with regard to the district, like requiring two off-street parking, right?
There was a lot of, there was, there's been a lot of question about whether we really need that, right?
It was mostly in all districts equally, because in R1A, it seemed okay, like, I forget exactly what it is, but I think it's in the, the closer to downtown districts, we have enough parking that you wouldn't necessarily need to require two per unit off-street.
I see.
So there's another one by district, sort of changing the numbers, I believe it's-
Well, and we want to, here's, here's the thing, do we want to make that a feature of this bylaw, or do we want to do it generally for any development in R1A, say that you don't need two, you can get one and a half, or one, or whatever we want to choose?
Well, you can't have one and a half parking, you'll just have a motorcycle.
I'll let us.
I'll buy, I can go for that one.
That assumes you're going to have more than one. I, or you could just make this discretionary to the planning board in the R one A district.
Yeah. I mean, again, it's kind of, to me, it's somewhat based on type, the type of housing. If it's a bunch of single-family units, you're going to want two cars. If it's more of an apartment-type situation like Willow Street, then you could have less.
Because Willow Street has nine to eighteen, right?
What's that?
They have nine parking spaces to eighteen units?
No. Have thirty parking spaces for eighteen units.
Oh, is nine covered or something?
Seven are dedicated to the commercial.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess I would say I don't, in, in general, whatever parking requirements we have in the R one area now should apply to this bylaw. If we think that they're too strict or too lenient, in any case, then we should change them generally.
Yeah.
Not just, not just explicitly.
Yeah.
As part of this bylaw.
Isn't it generally not two, two parking places per living unit? Or is it less than that?
And, and yeah, if it's, I think it was a single family, yes.
Two parking places.
But right, yeah, right.
Does it explicitly say what it is for multi? I don't know. I don't know.
Because generally I would think today's environment, most families, even older families, older couples have two cars, one for each person.
No, you're right.
I actually think it's almost a little discriminatory to the R one A to say, no, you only get one. And, and that just means there's more parking on the street. And of course, in snowstorms, when, you know, we get the reminders to move your car, where do these people move their second car?
And into the driveway.
Why do, why do we, why do we leave, why don't we leave the parking standard alone in this bylaw? And if we want to address it as a general question in our zoning for downtown, then we do that.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and the two things to think about here is, one, we, we've kind of deduced that it's highly unlikely that this bylaw will be used in the R one A district. And second is the parking study finished in probably a month, which may have some impact on how we think about.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the appropriate, pardon the pun, vehicle to make changes in the, in the, in the parking and not this bylaw.
The parking study also says we're sort of covered, period, right, for R one A?
Right.
Yeah.
Say that again, please, Corey.
It just says that there's ample parking spaces for all to use in the downtown area.
Thank you.
So I think we're going to leave it alone, right?
Yep.
No changes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Eight one twenty-two. U shape and location of open space.
There's only, when you see a question. So there were no questions about. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong document.
I have a question for Marty. Was the fifty percent from the senior housing bylaw?
Hold on.
Think so. I think so, too. So the question is, it seems to be working there. Why do we change it? I know one of the developers said you should decrease it, but.
The footnote does say C, senior housing bylaw for that. So yes, it's from.
Yeah, I don't see why we would change it now.
Yeah, I would say leave it like it is.
Good consensus.
Payment of fees and remedies.
That's a number, that's a number.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And then she had it. Could you go back to that, Bill? Because she's adding.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk is when are these fees payable?
Right, right. I remember that.
So I, I just added that language for your consideration.
No, I think it's actually good. It gives the developer cash flow and they don't have to make these payments until, you know, they're ready to start building as opposed to making them upfront or at some earlier stage.
Or do you, kind of like we did with Larry, Larry, with inclusionary money? I mean, do you do like half and half? You know, like, he was well underway with some units before he paid anything.
Right. So isn't that really the building permit? I mean, the first time he gets a building permit for the first unit?
It was even after that, though, I thought.
Right.
Yeah, he was further along.
Well, the language here says unless other payment terms and conditions are approved by the planning board.
All right, then that's fine. That, that gives us complete discretion. But as a general rule, you do it before you break ground. You make payment before you break ground unless we want to grant the, some greater lenience or.
Yeah.
And they can provide a mortgage to secure the payment. So, I mean, there are lots of ways to secure the payment.
Or you could just say, you know, fifty percent of it is due at issuance of building permit. Fifty percent is due when fifty percent of the units are done, or the last fifty percent is when fifty percent of the units.
Or would it be tied to when the units are sold?
Yeah, but the way it's written now is that's up to us.
Yeah.
We, we have the flexibility. If there's some, you know, extreme circumstance or whatever, we can, we can modify in any way we want.
Okay, and that's, that, any developer worth their salt is going to read this and come back and say, well, here's what I'm proposing.
Hmm, right. Okay. All right, is that it? Is there next, what's on the next page?
Nothing.
The remedies? Did you consider the remedies?
Go back.
Oh, if they don't meet the.
Next page.
Some requirement.
You go to the next page.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. There we go. We're going to demolish those, demolish.
That's called, that's called killing a mosquito with a sledgehammer.
That's not an uncommon option, right? I've, I've seen that happen when people don't comply their orders to take something down.
Where, Brian, you, you might remember, you, you might remember, I don't know if it's in New York, some city is requiring somebody to take down the top sixteen floors of the building. But they've already built and somehow, you know, they got away with more than they should have. And the planning commissioner said, no, you have to chop this building off. And it's very expensive and difficult.
Wow.
Okay.
How far along were the buildings when this was determined?
They were working on the interiors.
Oh, whoopee.
Okay, are we good?
Are we good there? Can we move on? Can we move on to zoning map change?
Patrick, I had a question on that. When we were talking, I looked through your PowerPoint. I thought it was very good, but I thought we were going to have a little band of line, a little buffer zone along that northern border with some of the newer subdivision houses that have this circle.
Patton, Patton, or Patton Drive.
Yeah, I think we.
Can we go to the map first before we start talking about this?
Yeah, can you share that?
And let me get into my, right. Okay, it's not there. Going to dig it up. Where's the PowerPoint? Okay, can everybody see that?
Yeah. Can you go to slideshow?
Maybe we can just scroll down. There we, there we go, first slide.
Yep. That's the existing business district.
Yeah.
Right. So I thought we were going to put a little buffer right along, right along here.
Well, yeah, let's, let's advance to the various options. Yeah, we've seen these. All right.
So, so this was the contiguous approach.
Right, this is.
Was the cutout.
Yeah, this was the cutout. And with the idea of having a, an extended locust street up to the residences on Carriage Lane. And then the westernmost two residences on Carriage Lane were business zoning. So we were truncating that drive access. I did.
Right, here's the same thing. This is without the, this is with a connection.
No, that, this is, this is just leaving it alone.
Okay, got it.
Right. This is just the concept of modifying the access. One thing that I found out is Carriage Lane is a private way. And the idea of modifying a private way for this, I guess you could call public purpose.
You'd have to take it, right?
Yeah, that'd be the best approach to take. I think it brings some real challenges.
So.
It's about three miles round trip to and from the store for those two houses. Like the roadway there is ridiculously long to any sort of access.
I, I said this option here would be a huge no-go for a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So now we go to this.
Yeah.
This is, I remain as is without, without the commercial, you know, bridge across the two halves facing on Bay Road.
Right. Keeping the access as it is, what we did do is we did bring in the land area for the added zone. You'll see on this one, we're adding nineteen point two one acres of business zoned area.
There.
This one would be twenty point five three. If you're taking the two properties along the, the westerly frontage and turning those into business. And again, as we know, even though you may rezone those properties that face onto Bay Road as business, they may never in our lifetime convert to that, but they have the option to do it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't see that as, I mean, I don't see zoning them commercial as reducing their value in any way. It might even increase it.
And that's my, I think, that, Bill, I think you're right. I think that actually increases the value of their property.
Well, it's just like my street, right? There's eight houses on my street that are in the business district, but you know, they've been residences for forever.
Right. Does that also increase their tax bill?
No, there is no commercial, there's no commercial tax rate.
Well, I mean, increasing the value.
It won't be assessed any, there's no change in the use. There's no change in the residence. It, there's a potential.
It's tend to be based on their current use, not their potential use.
Right.
As an economist, I could disagree with that, but that's the way the world works.
But how does the tax base keep up with inflation? Like, if, if you buy the house, let's say, round numbers, a hundred thousand dollars and it goes up in value to a hundred and fifty because it's in a different district now or whatever.
There's something called revaluation that occurs by statute every three years. And the entire town is reassessed. So that's how, how all the properties keep up with inflation.
So that's how it would take care of the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Patrick, my, my original thought was, I thought we had talked about having a buffer zone right along here where my.
Yeah, you, you're right. And I, I recall on one of the sketches, we did have that, but unfortunately, I didn't include it here. But it brings up an important point. If we are extending the B district up here, I think that we probably need to think in terms of some dimensionals. I know our B district doesn't have setbacks. Isn't that right, Brian?
That's correct. It's, again, it's by site plan review.
Right. So I, I, I think that's something that we probably would want to consider, particularly as it deals with buffers, particularly as it deals with future development of larger parcels like this.
I mean, I, I, I agree, but I mean, there's been developments of other larger parcels and that's always been a factor in permitting them and you know, the, the buffers are always an issue with neighbors. So I, I think that you're going to end up having something anyway. Even if it's not.
So, can I ask a question? So Patrick, is your point that if you try and buffer what is now the public safety in Winthrop School Site, that, that changes the potential of buffering in the entire business district?
Well, you know, what it, it, this calls into question the fact that we don't have that type of setback available to us in the B zone. You know, in that this is municipal property and it's likely redevelopment would have some sort of town municipal management or you know, development selection process. You know, you can certainly build those kinds of requirements in. But I think that we have to think about, how do we sell? If we're serious about doing this, how do we sell it now? How do we propose to people how we're going to appropriately protect their property? And it would need to address not just, you know, the properties here along the northerly side, but the, to the south and to the, the west as well.
So the, my question is, can, can you on this parcel that we're looking to incorporate, establish setbacks unique to this parcel?
How can you do that absent the rest of the zone?
That's, that's what I thought.
Well, you, you do it in, in the RFP process when the town wants to.
Got it. No, no, I get it. I get it. I just.
Could you not just require a trail be built along that edge and, and some buffer and public freeway?
Many ways to do it.
There are any number of ways to do it, but my point is, is that, you know, you want to be able to convince the voters that you're protecting, you know, those abiding residential properties that may have the potential to be negatively.
I, I agree.
Isn't it true that if this is part of one zone, the setbacks have to be the same for all properties in the zone? That once you start trying to take. the setbacks have to be the same for all properties in the zone, that once you start trying to take one parcel within a zone and have different setback requirements for it as opposed to the other parcels, that's spot zoning, and that's, that's the problem.
Spot zoning is where you take a type of zoning and you plunk it down for an economic purpose for one person effectively. And if there's a public purpose for that rezoning, that isn't gonna hold up as a, as a, a spot zoning.
I thought you can't have zoning, I thought you can't have different regulations within a zone for, for different parcels.
Actually, you can, we did it, we did it as an overlay district on Willow Street.
But then that's making it its own district, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
You, if, 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 if you call this area, you know, the Business Improvement District Number Two, then you can have whatever you want. But it can't be an extension of this, it can't be part of the same original.
No, I get it, I get it, that was my point, that was the whole point of that question.
Okay.
So, how do we accomplish a step, get, because I agree with everybody, the sale of this will be important to for the neighbors, that there's a buffer zone that will help screen and protect them. Is there a way to do that relatively easily?
So on the north side, you're dealing with three parcels that would benefit from the buffer, but benefit disproportionately to the three parcels at Carriage Lane that have already suffered the no buffer, right? So does that mean just taking all of Carriage Lane reduces that inequity, and then the only parcels remaining that would need that buffer would have it? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
No, I, I, but the, the point is the same. Wherever those buffers are, what I'm trying to determine is, is there a way to incorporate a buffer in this new proposed zone, wherever it's needed, to make this more palatable?
Well, like we talked about before, I think to make this palatable for many around, especially, you know, a butter is adjacent in this area, they're gonna need to know more than just buffers, they're gonna wanna know you know, what may go on this parcel or these parcels. You know, we, we, we touched on this a while back, where we said, well, you know, is it a you know, is it another shopping center, is it a mixed-use thing, you know, who knows what it is, but I think to sell it, they, they'd wanna at least see some scenarios of what it could be, because again, the town can define what it wants, what it wants to go there, right?
Yes.
Along with buffers.
No, I, I, I get that, and, but, and I understand why you would think about doing that. But in reality, it would be an exercise in fantasy.
No, I know.
Because you could say, look, here's what could potentially go here, and, you know, this is not gonna happen for at least ten to fifteen years if we started right now getting rid of this school, this site. We don't, we're not gonna be here, we don't know what the economy is going to be like in fifteen to twenty years, so saying, here's what's an example of what could go here, is kind of like, well, it's a nice thing to do, but.
No, I know, but then what's the point of doing it?
Exactly my point, why do it? I'm going, hey, guys, we're rezoning this. I think Bill was trying to incorporate some protections for the neighbors and saying, hey, we're putting in a hundred foot buffer, or whatever that number is. You know, and can we incorporate the requirement for a definitive landscaping plan in this, so that they know, okay, it's gonna be part of the commercial zone, there's gonna be a buffer, and there's a plan for landscaping to protect our viewscape. I just wanna know, we do that? Is there a legal way for us to do?
Well, yeah, why don't you just retain, the town retain that buffer zone?
Yeah, that's absolutely not a bad idea.
Oh, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
That's not a bad idea!
Well, then who's gonna maintain it in the town, there's gonna be an extra cost there? And how you gonna maintain it, what's it gonna look like?
Well, that doesn't really to answer that question right now.
I mean, they maintain that whole property as it is now. But it, I mean, there's, as we know, there's drainage that runs through here and not where the buffer zone would be necessarily, but that would at least allow you to you know, have future access for whatever, drainage, utilities, what have you, through a site that, you know, we wouldn't know anymore.
I mean, you could, when you.
Actually, what, what you could do is just reduce the size of the parcel.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, exactly, and, and one of the things that I've been thinking about with, with this business district is, is to how to tie it together, because it, it's, it's, it's a little bit amorphous, and, and one thing that, that I think would be interesting is to try and, and develop like a, a little series of parks so that people would walk in this district. And what you could do was have, you know, like, was it Corey, you said like a, a walking trail or something, and, and you know, have a, a nice kind of park-like space, maybe with different exercise stations or, or something along the perimeter of this that would provide the buffer that Bill's talking about.
Well, there, there already is, right, along where the, where the cursor is right now, that's all wooded, there's trails. The whole gas line is a trail, really.
Right.
And I don't know, you know, given what's under there, what we can do with it, but it's, you know, my, my kids ride their bikes back there, there's a bunch of little you know, there's, in the woods there behind the school, there's tons of trails for, you know, dirt bikes and whatever back there. And, you know, goes all the way down to the driveway at Myopia.
Well, then maybe, maybe the thing to do is to just have the rezoning an abbreviated area that kind of goes like where my cursor is going, and then also runs down here.
Right, exactly.
So that all of these neighbors around here get an extra hundred feet or fifty feet of, of buffer.
Yep. Yeah, exactly.
How do we do that?
Well.
Just change the zoning on, the zoning line doesn't conform to the property line.
Exactly.
Right.
It's, 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 it's.
Well.
Small.
But you'd have to, you'd have to, whenever the town wants to get rid of it, or before, you, let's say, an R, right, the town then owns that L, backwards L shape there on the plan of land. Right, and then the zones.
No, it could be, it could be sold privately, but the zoning on that land is different.
Well, but what, what does that prevent, though? That doesn't make it, that doesn't make it a buffer that you control.
It's a buffer, it's a buffer if the land in that area cannot be developed commercially.
So.
But it doesn't eliminate somebody from having no trees or any other kind of buffer there.
Well, yes, I, I, yes, if you, if you really want, if you wanna have control, if you don't just wanna create a setback and prevent development, if you wanna actually, you know, manage it, well then, yeah, the town has to own it.
That's what I'm saying, right, especially on the southeastern side there, where it's already this little trail, this little trail system. You know, the northerly side over by Patton Drive is maybe a little less important, but I think it'd be nice to be able to connect back up to 1A from.
Then, then what you have to do is you have to create a separate parcel.
Yeah, I know.
Which is, which is this little L shape, right? And then that's, you're not gonna rezone that parcel, and the town's gonna retain ownership of it.
Right, you, you, you can rezone it if you want, but it's just the town controls it.
So just a point is, though, that the town already owns this entire parcel.
Right, it's, it's just an A and R process, we do it all the time, right?
Right, so, so, so that, so we would need to have the town submit an A and R to create that buffer zone.
Right.
All right, so, Patrick, can you make that happen?
I'll give it to my staff.
No, but I think that's the solution.
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
Yeah, why don't somebody pull up the, the aerial? That gives us a pretty good understanding of where the vegetation is.
Yeah, so that whole area behind the Public Safety Building, that whole wooded area, there's a bunch of trails in there, little
Right in, right in here.
Bike trails.
Yep, and there's wooded area here, along, it goes along the property.
Right, where there, where there isn't wooded area is next to the fields there, and behind the playground, there's not much there.
Yeah, but you want that, you want that.
Yeah, you want it, you want it, sure.
And the same thing for Carriage.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily think you need that whole area behind the Public Safety, you know, but some of it would be nice.
I think that's an elegant solution.
All right.
I guess, yeah, I think it'd be a nice, like, for the people, you know, that live back, you know.
Here, and people that live here.
If there was a connection across from Locust going, you know, between Patton and the school up to like the pool and Patton Park, and there's a crosswalk right there, I think that'd be pretty nice.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, these, so that all these people could walk
Yeah.
up to Bay Road like that.
Yep.
Along this buffer zone.
Yep. All right.
All right, we have an idea.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Well, I, so, Patrick, is, is doable to think about doing an A and R at some point?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the, the, the best approach to take.
Yeah, because if, if we can sell people on, okay, there's a buffer, we're keeping this, you know, these little areas, these little pockets that you like, and, you know, once the town sells this, or maybe even before, there's a trail up through there that gets you up to Bay Road from, from the, the tree streets down there, then, you know, I think, I think that.
That, that's, that's, that's pretty convincing, you know, that's pretty, that's nice.
Yep.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Oh, Bill, stop sharing.
Can we move on to minutes?
Which minutes?
March 2nd, when I wasn't here.
We need, I think we need to approve the February minutes, don't we?
I don't know what you guys didn't do last time, so.
Well, Marnie was going to work with Patrick on making those correcting some things that she wanted to correct, I think.
Yes, I, I don't think we got the revised version.
Okay.
Does anyone have it? Patrick, did, did you circulate the revised version of the February minutes?
I thought that I did, Marnie.
Yeah, I think he did.
Oh, okay. What was the date of that? February what?
Sixteenth.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one Planning Board Meeting, and I make a motion that we also approve the minutes of the March 2nd, two thousand twenty-one Planning Board.
Rick Mitchell seconds.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, unless there's any more discussion. All those in favor, say aye, Marnie.
Aye.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Bill.
Bill, we nigh.
Cory.
Cory, bow you, aye.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, aye.
Brian Stein is an aye. From the end of this. Okay, March 2nd.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 2nd.
I second that motion.
Whoa. Wow, okay, Marnie seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Bill.
Bill, we nigh.
Cory.
Cory, bow you, aye.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, aye.
Marnie.
I'm Marnie Crouch, aye.
Philip Steen, since I wasn't there. Anything else, Patrick, I know we've got the annual report, but we might wanna, might wanna, if, if we can, put that off one more meeting. But, I don't know, I mean, I know Richard usually goes through it, I don't know if you've done that or not, Richard, but.
No.
Okay.
Patrick, you already submitted a draft, right?
I submitted a draft so they can have a placeholder as they're putting together all the, their reporting for town meeting.
Okay.
But we have a little time yet, right?
Not a lot, i- if we can do it this week, that'd be great.
Okay, so I haven't really had a chance to review.
I, I haven't either, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, if you could look at it this week, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
Do we have to vote on it? Technically? Probably not.
Necessarily, you can if you want. We'd have to wait, our next meeting is April 6th.
Yeah.
Let's not, let's not vote on it, let's give comments to Patrick by the end of this week and let him rip with it.
Yeah.
Was I asked, well, I'm sort of the new kid, right, I, I don't really know what this is.
It's just, it's just an annual report of things we've done, you know, A and R plans, special permits, any, you know, any real decisions that we've made, you know, even stuff that we've talked about and are working on in general, that goes to.
Corey, in a, a general way, the town has every board committee and department prepare a report of the events that took place during the, the year. What was different about this one is that the town manager wanted the report to be made based on fiscal 2020. And heretofore, we'd always done it on the calendar.
Right, so what's that, July 1st then, or?
Yeah, yeah, July 1st.
So it's everything before anyways.
Through June 30th of last summer.
So is that gonna be duplicate counting sort of, Patrick? Will there be a section of the year?
It would be some duplicate counting of that last six months of 2019, yes.
Okay, it would exclude me, and I guess I'm learning too.
Right. I actually reviewed it, my first thought was, where am I?
You're right there.
No, but I mean, we weren't part of the planning board because the report ends on June 30th. Our, my first meeting, I think our first meeting was July 7th.
Second, 7th, yeah.
And then you add in the fact that we didn't meet a year ago for about nearly a two-month period.
Right. Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'll look at it this week.
Okay.
As well, there's.
I have received a request from Jill Mann and Larry Smith on behalf of the project at 133 Essex Street. They would like to come back to the board for a pre-application on April 6th, which is our next meeting.
Okay.
No. I think that given site investigations, infrastructure, all of those kinds of things that they've been looking at for the last six, eight weeks, they may have made some design changes or concept changes, so they wanted to come back to the board for our next meeting.
What's the address again?
133 Essex Street.
Atabro Farm.
Okay.
Patrick, there are some, there are some restless butters.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Cause they, I mean, they have a fundraising endeavor. They're in, they're in touch. We, we don't wanna do anything that.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's part of the reason as well, that they're coming back.
And, and I wanna make sure that they're all notified.
Okay.
Patrick, any, um, any response to the selectmen's uh, advertising associate positions?
Um, I know that it's on their list. I know, uh.
They've announced it. They've announced it at several meetings. I just wondered if there was any response.
No, I haven't, haven't seen or heard it of any at all.
What is this position?
Associate.
For the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, there are actually a great deal of open positions of various boards and committees in town. Um, lot of opportunities for folks to get involved.
Yeah, that was an associate position. I think I was one of the last ones, if not the last one. Uh, before I became a regular member. I was thinking about that recently. There hasn't been one since I was.
Yeah. Well.
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, Chris Shepard was.
Chris Shepard, that's right.
Yeah. And uh. Laura Walsh.
Yeah.
Yeah, first of period.
Yep. Okay, anything else, Patrick?
That's it for me, folks.
All right.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Rick makes a motion, Richard seconds. Okay, uh, all those in favor, Marnie?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Bill?
Bill, ween, aye.
Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
And Brian Stein, aye. Thank you, everybody.